The same, and then you can go about trying to solve where would we end up? Is there any Nash equilibrium? So it's really easy to kind of self-test yourself on that, and it gives you some good practice. So the things you have to remember with the payoff matrix, and you saw how the homework is a little bit different, or it's possible they stacked them or something, but the way we did it in class here was this would be the payoff for B. If that's Bob. And the second entry is always the top persons. And once you really start to burn that in your brains, it becomes easier and easier to look at it. So another little trick you might do during the test is to just circle one of them. So if this is berries, and you guys don't have to have colors, you could just do it with what you got. But just circle the first entry in each one. Then that helps kind of set the tone for where your eyeball needs to track. And so does Jackie have any dominant strategies? Or does Bob? So dominant strategy, is there something that makes the person better off no matter what the other person does? And so here Bobby is better with this one if Jackie goes here, but better with this one here. So Bobby's answer changes depending on which one, right? And so what we'd see is if the dominant strategy kind of pops up, it's almost easier for me to show you a situation where it would. So maybe don't do this to your paper. But if this was 155, see how instantly 67 is greater than 36, 155 is greater than 100? Bobby's always better off doing Y. Okay? So if that's different, and again, it just takes a little bit of practice, training your eyeball on thinking that way. And then maybe just as important though on the test is to maybe run through that scenario. If Jackie chooses yes, then Bobby should choose yes. If Jackie chooses no, then Bobby should choose. So if this is no, then 100 is greater than 55, so he should choose X. Those two things don't match, therefore no dominant strategy. All right, so going the other way, the uncircled answers. We have the same thing going on. Jackie would choose yes if Bobby chose X, because 64 is greater than 2. Or Jackie would choose no if Bobby chose yes, because 66 is greater than 40. So no dominant strategy. So we happen to have one where there's no dominant strategy. So then the next thing I'd check is for a Nash equilibrium. So is there a solution where neither player would like to change? So you can just pick any old solution. Let's just start here. Would Bobby want to change? No. Would Jackie want to change? Yes, because 64 is greater than 2. As soon as you find one person wanting to change, then it's not a Nash equilibrium. So what about here? No, Bobby would want to change. What about here? No, Jackie would want to change. It looks like we've created something with no Nash equilibrium. Because in each circumstance, somebody wants to change their answer. So the way I have these numbers here, there's no Nash equilibrium. That's probably not one that I'd give you on the test. We did do that with the matching pennies, not typically one that I would give you. I'd probably have either possibly dominant strategy or maybe multiple Nash equilibrium. If there are Nash equilibrium, so let's see, we can make one. If this was, let's just keep this at 155. Now Bobby doesn't want to change, Jackie doesn't want to change, so this is a Nash equilibrium. The only other place a Nash equilibrium could be would be here. multiple Nash equilibrium are always going to be on the diagonal, because we've already kind of determined that they don't want to switch here, which means this one's better for one person. So that might be something to remember. If greater than one Nash equilibrium, they're always on the diagonal. Which does not help you if you screwed up the analysis of this one, bear in mind. So sometimes you might just not want to assume that. You might want to double-check your brain to make sure, oh yeah, this one's not either. Because if you learn, if this one looks like it is, then you might have screwed this one up. Okay. Let me put it back to you. Anything there I said or other things?
I mean, I know I missed his day, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, you did, okay. Did you look online?
Yeah, and I got someone else's notes. And I copied the, I just am confused on the Nash equilibrium. Like how do you, what determines if it's a Nash equilibrium?
Okay. So part of the definition is that neither player wants to change. Dot, dot, dot. You guys have it in your notes already. Neither player wants to change, given what the other one has done. So we're kind of taking as given. So if we go here, we're kind of saying to ourselves, and we're Bobby, assuming that Jackie really is going to stick with what they've done, would I want to change? Me being Bobby. And the answer here is no, because 67 is greater than 36. Now you got to do that same logic for Jackie. So now Jackie's thinking, assuming Bobby's going here, taking that as given, would I want to change? Yes, because 40 is less than 66. Now had this been 140? The answer is no, 140 is greater than 66. So that's an Nash equilibrium. Neither player wants to change. 67 is greater than 36, 140 is greater than 66. So that would be an Nash equilibrium. Which means that I just eliminated that, because I just flip-flopped from what we did before. So I'm kind of monkeying up this half quite a bit, but... So does that help with that? So just thinking neither player wants to change. So it was Nash's thought of an equilibrium state, that it's stable. If neither one wants to change, then why would it change? What else?
Could we go over the kink demand curve?
Sure. So the kink demand curve, I'll just tell you right now, there'll probably be something on the test, but probably at most one question, maybe two, at the absolute most, it would be two. More than likely one question at best. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, I guess is what I'm telling you. But some of the concepts of the kink demand curve carry on into other things. So we talked about the elasticity of Ford and GM. And so if we were looking at M&amp;M candy versus all candy, it would look like that, similar to when we had Ford and US automobiles. If we were looking at the demand curve for M&amp;Ms versus the demand curve for chocolate, M&amp;Ms have much more substitutes, so it'd be more elastic than the demand curve for chocolate. So that was one lesson that came out of that. That was a little bit indirect on the kink demand. That's kind of good for some other items. So the whole thing here was our first attempt at strategic behavior, which was then quickly replaced with game theory. So that's why I don't want to spend too much on it. But the main things here are pricing. And our conclusion with this is that prices are going to be sticky. And that's because of the strategic behavior going on, where if M&amp;M company raises their price, nobody else will. And so they will drastically reduce their sales, because nobody else is changing their price. But if M&amp;M cuts their price, all other chocolate makers will also cut their price. And so this is the demand curve that will follow. And so for price increases, we move this way. For price decreases, we move this way. Which doesn't give any of the firms, M&amp;M's or the other chocolate companies any real incentive to cut price. And that's what made it sticky. And so the kinked part comes into play that we're likely going to have a demand curve that looks like that. Under that pricing assumption, that assumption of strategic behavior on the pricing. Theorems? The Coase theorem would definitely be one that I think I mentioned in class that you should know. So the Coase theorem was stating, if there are a small number of agents with low transaction costs and well-defined property rights, those three things we wrote up on the board. If you have those three conditions, then private agents will negotiate out an efficient solution without the need for government to be involved. But you got to have well-defined property rights is right up at the top of the list. So that was, at the heart of an externality problem is not well-defined property rights. So pollution, we talked about. The, nobody really owns the air, so the company gets to use the air for free. But maybe there's ways to be creative on charging companies for the air, meaning regulations that say you can't be polluting that into the atmosphere. And so that's a way of forcing them to pay for air, because they're not able to dump crap into the air. They have to clean their crap before they dump it into the air. Okay? Now, cleaning crap costs money. And so that's what helps close the gap on the externality. So when we looked at the market, private agents bring about efficient solutions for the big problem of allocating scarce resources to production and consumption of goods. And so this is our output market of whatever product we're talking about. The free behavior of consumers and producers gives us a good solution. That's not true if there's externality. So we looked at education, we looked at pollution. And our pollution example was that the externality caused society's cost curve to be higher than the private cost curve. This is the same picture we had in class. So there was extra cost on the third party. Out of here already?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You bet. So that's the third-party cost. So the definition of externality was a cost or benefit borne by a third-party not directly related to this transaction. And so that is the external cost on that person. That's kind of the innocent victim or the innocent recipient, if it's a benefit, of education. Or if it's your neighbor that plants a beautiful garden, and you're their neighbor, your property value might go up by a little bit, because your neighbor's keeping a nice yard. You didn't participate in them going to the lawn, or the landscape company, and buying the landscaping bricks and all the garden equipment and tending to it. And you know, maybe the person spent thousands of dollars on their garden. They did it completely for themselves, but you benefited. You were a third-party getting, I'm giving the situation of a benefit there, of the garden. So those external costs in this case, or if there was external benefits like we saw with education or with the landscaping project, lead to the market solution not being efficient for society. Society's solution is always best when all benefits, all social benefits and all social costs are taken into account. That's where society's most efficient solution is. So in the case of a negative externality, the allocatively efficient societal solution is here. But the pollution, somebody getting, somebody having to absorb an external cost means that there's too much of that good being produced. So if we can find and be creative on how to internalize the external cost, that's what Coase brought to the table and said, hey, if we have well-defined property rights and there's a small number of agents, these people are going to figure it out on their own. And then we no longer have the externality. So that's a tricky thing to do, though, is to take what on the face of it is an external cost going on a third-party, and make it somehow become either the producer or the consumer's problem to pay for. If we can internalize the externality, that's a way to solve the problem. And that was huge when Coase brought that to the table in the 50s and 60s, because post-World War II, our nation was starting to get bigger and bigger government. And it's continued that way till present day. But we tended to turn to, oh, the government can fix it. Oh, we need government intervention. Let's go tell the government, hey, this person's hurting me. Help me, government, right? And so wasn't always the government that needed to dish out the redistribution of whatever the issue was, the unfairness out there. And so it was a fairly novel idea at the time that the market kind of figured out itself if it gets a little bit of a nudge with defining property rights. Okay, that was a fairly long-winded answer to yes. That would be one theorem that you should know. And maybe know some of the other aspects of it, similar to what the homework problem covered. So are you going to surprise us with a short answer? What's that?
Are you going to surprise us with the short answers on the test? Or will you email them out?
I will email them out, yes. Yeah, they weren't going to be meant to be surprised this time, so... I was kind of waiting till after this, but I don't want to wait too long. So Daryl, if you can email me so that I have a little something in my inbox, if you haven't seen them after a little bit, I will get those out to you. So, but I'd like to get them out to you tomorrow morning at the latest. Oop, you guys would normally get an extra credit question. An extra credit point. Oh, yeah, I got to get them. Got my cars at the shop. All right. What else? That didn't really happen this semester, did it? Usually I get busted at least once, so everybody in attendance gets extra credit.
Does that count for right now?
No, that's what I said. It does not count for right now. As I said, you guys would have normally had to spend a normal class. Got an extra credit point on that.
So then we need to know the matching pennies and the prisoner's dilemma pretty well?
I mean, you should know how to work any game theory question. So with those, I want you to be able to work the problem more than just memorize, you know, details about the particular thing. So my intent with going through those three scenarios was to expose you to a situation where there was one Nash equilibrium. Battle of the sexes had two Nash equilibrium. And matching pennies had zero Nash equilibrium. So I wanted to show you that unlike what we did in the past, it's possible to have different situations with game theory, with strategic behavior. And so at the end of the day, I'd like you to be able to take any scenario that's thrown at you and analyze it. And that would be looking for Nash equilibrium, look for dominant strategy, and analyze the game. But prisoner's dilemma is certainly one. And just the, if you were to have to define what a prisoner's dilemma is, I think we did in class, but I mean, the meat of it that you can remember from this review is that both parties have a dominant strategy that moves them away maybe from the most desirable outcome. So in our first example we did with Coke and Pepsi, it would have been more desirable for both of them to go with the low advertising. They'd both make more money. But each one has a dominant strategy, so that we end up not there. And then the true case with the, well, quasi-true, but I mean, the real case of the prisoners is separating them and giving a deal to each one in order to induce a confession. You know, with each of the market structures, we looked at the long-run equilibrium, and I gave you the long-run equilibrium for each market structure. Perfect competition will not be on this one, so I'll skip that one. But there was a lot of lessons that are true for it that follow through with monopolistic competition and the other ones. monopolistic, maybe I should start with monopoly. Keep it in order the way we did it. So with monopoly, you guys may not even want to draw this. It's in your notes, if you want to just, I don't really care about it. Just telling you, it's already in your notes, exactly what I'm doing. Produce the quantity where marginal revenue equals marginal cost. Charge the highest price people are willing and able to pay. Average total cost curve, cut through the minimum point where marginal cost comes through. And the average cost of producing that amount is that, giving us economic profits. Economic profit sends out a signal of enter, but that's not going to happen with monopoly because of what? Barriers to entry. So that was a huge part, thing going on with monopolies is barriers to entry. If there was entry, that's one of the beauties of competition. Super-important key ingredient to a market-based system is free entry and exit. Mobility of resources to go to their highest and best use. That is, in essence, the invisible hand that makes the market system create society's optimal amounts of output for the scarce resources. Competition gets rid of obnoxious, obscene, high profits. So when I hear that Chase Manhattan made $20 billion, I'm pretty comfortable that that was a fair amount of profit. I know it sounds huge. I know that's a big number. And the media loves that it's a big number. But the banking industry is fairly competitive. And so if Chase is abusing the situation, then Citigroup or some other bank is more than happy to undercut them, right? And so those banks keep undercutting each other, whether it's fees, interest, you name it, until that profit is back to being fair. Now, in the short run, Farmer Dick, Farmer Harry, Farmer Ted, they all could possibly have economic profits too, profits above their opportunity cost. Competition got rid of that in the long run. So entry and exit of firms will get rid of that. So if you were to look, in fact, I think I should have this as a student project at some point. I'd like to know what it is, and I've never heard anybody do it. But I'd like to take one of these big companies with the $20 billion of profit and really look at how much that is per shareholder, you know, how much people really get returned. Take into account what's happened over a 10-year window, because the banks didn't do so hot three years ago. They might have had $40 billion worth of losses. And now they've had $20 billion worth of profit. So what are they doing on average over the 10-year window, right? So you've got to think about these dynamics, because the media loves to jump on any buzzwords that kind of get us upset, that get us to look at the paper, to flip on their news show. I mean, that's what it's all about in their world. That's what the game's all about. Okay, so that's long-run equilibrium in monopoly. And societies, the thing we keep coming back to is, why are monopolies bad? Well, the allocatively efficient quantity is right here, where the marginal benefit curve equals the marginal cost. In other words, as long as that monopoly's not polluting the atmosphere, their costs reflect society's costs. And as long as the consumers of the good don't have some sort of external benefits going on, their benefit is society's benefit. And so the social benefit and social cost curve is right here, and the monopoly is just not making enough. They're under-producing the good. Monopolistic competition is awfully close to that. We're going to draw a flatter demand curve as the first secret to monopolistic competition. Because of the nature of entry and exit and the availability, more specifically, the availability of substitutes for the consumers, we expect the demand curve to be relatively flat, especially flatter compared to what a monopoly would be. So it's a more elastic demand curve because of lots of substitutes. Marginal revenue still follows those properties with a single price. Marginal costs, all firms maximize profits by producing that quantity. They're going to charge the highest price people are willing and able to pay. Now, to make this the long-run equilibrium, the average cost curve looks like this. Entry of firms and exit of firms means that in the long run, the average cost, average total cost of production is going to equal the price they're selling, no profits. No economic profits in the long run due to entry of firms. Unlike here, where barriers to entry allowed there to be profits. So a number of different questions that you might see in a multiple-choice format. If you really got these, if you start off by just memorizing these and some of these basic concepts, then some of those other things are going to fall into place. So then know the which you already have in your notes. And I just set them verbally, but I won't spend time writing them down again. 13, 14, 15, and 16, I believe. If you forget, or if I just told you something wrong, it's whatever the homework was over this time, which I think that's right. Because I think chapter 12 was perfect competition. What else you got? Um, I would suggest for multiple choice, this is not a new suggestion, same thing I've suggested all semester, to generate questions from my Econ Lab for multiple choice. Because you can, uh, tell it to spit you out new questions. So I think people found that to be good. And then for the short answer, working the practice exam and looking at your notes on problems that we might have gone through. But usually those will go hand-in-hand with the practice exam. Anything else? How'd the public good stuff go? Now, you guys still have that homework tonight, but... And that was the freshest thing we went over, but... That was, seems to be maybe the only topic that comes to my mind that we haven't hit. Definitely memorize the two characteristics of public goods. Non-rival, non-excludable. Tried to hammer at those in a few different ways at lecture last time. Non-rival, non-excludable. And not all goods that the government provides are public goods, in Econ class, anyway. But, and, and I guess, uh, saying that made me think of another way of looking at it. Government would probably be a little bit smaller, maybe a lot smaller, if it really focused in on public goods. Because the government provides a lot of goods, and they do a lot of things. But some of those things could be handled with, uh, private companies, maybe more so than they are today. But that's up for debate. That's part of what the process is all about, is how things should be done. And to what extent. Anything else? I don't want to rush too fast. You guys want to sit and cogitate a little bit? You are, you are free to go, as Ashton did. Anytime you feel like you're set, you can go.
Thanks, Russ.
Yep. See you later. If you guys have some additional questions as you're working on it, you can ask me at the finals breakfast tonight, 10 o'clock. I'll be there, serving some eggs. You can ask me anytime questions, you're coming through the line. Brian? Yes. I mean, that is the game theory section, so... The theory of strategic behavior is pretty much what that whole chapter on oligopoly is about. Tyler? Social, uh, social interest theory. And you'll see those in the homework if you haven't done it. I think one of them's in there anyway, but, um... Yep. The main thing is, uh, the public choice theory looks at people still have their own private motives and incentives to where a government democracy may not get an efficient solution. So it's two competing theories on that. All right.